Welcome to the regular meeting of Bedford City Council for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. First, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. If you would please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Thanks. Here. Janutus?
Here.
Flew Hardy?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Cochi?
Here. Council, you have the minutes of the work session of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Any corrections? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Beesack, second by Spinks? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. Yes. Okay, our technician just told us they're having some streaming problems. It will be recorded and you can catch up with it later, and we hope that'll get straightened out here pretty soon. So you won't miss anything. Council, you have the minutes of the regular meeting of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I motion for acceptance by Flew Hardy, second by Janutus? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. Under old business, we really don't have anything, but I'm going to take this opportunity to talk about the Ward Five position. There will be postcards going out and also social media to everyone in Ward Five. If you're interested in the position, some minimum requirements are you attend all council meetings, not limited to the regularly scheduled first and third Mondays of every month. Continue to be a resident of the ward from which they were elected or appointed. Be a ward resident for at least six months, shall have had, and to continue to qualify as an elector. No member of council shall be directly or indirectly interested in a contract job, work, or service that is in conflict with anything in the city, and the term will begin in February, two thousand and twenty-one. There'll be some announcements going out. We're going to send out postcards to to people in the wards, in Ward Five. Also, it'll be on our social media and our city website. So if you're interested, just a brief letter to introduce yourself and a brief background, and you'll get it to our clerk, Tracy Simons, and send it to her at City of Bedford, one-six-five Center Road. So, and the deadline on that will be, where'd my calendar go? We're gonna have to give it a little while. I would think one, two, three. We're almost gonna have to make it February first for a deadline for interest, so we can get somebody appointed by the second meeting in February. So February first will be the deadline to get a letter or an email into Tracy Simons. And you can get on the city's website and look at the charter, which goes into what's, what's the job of a council person, and it's BedfordOH.gov, so. Hopefully, we'll get some good interest and we'll get somebody seated for that Ward Five position. Okay, reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items real quickly. As I was sharing with Councilman Saunders just a short time ago, we've been working on both an internal GIS system for our service department, who's, you know, we've been working to update, input a lot of information that's helpful for the everyday work of our staff. But on top of that, we've also been working with Cuyahoga County officials. The county has a GIS system, also, which includes map and data. All of that is now available directly on the City of Bedford's website. All of that went live today on our site, so anybody looking for data, information, they can tie right into that information on the BedfordOH.gov, so just kudos to our staff. Obviously, we're continuing to build that out. We're continuing to partner with the county, but it's another component, I think, that, that, you know, our website's really taken a jump and, and that data, it's helpful and it's useful, so kudos to everybody that was involved in that. Also, we're, Cuyahoga County is, we're anticipating them releasing the second round of the Tree Canopy Grant, and we fully intend to apply for that grant again. You know, if you recall, last year, we planted over a hundred trees and and we used that grant to purchase and implant, and again, we'll be doing that as well this year if we're successful, so we will be submitting application for that funding source. I want to just give some credit real quick to some staff. I notified Council last week in our, in the weekly memo, the, some data from the Recreation Department, and, you know, them being able to secure, you know, we, we spent about forty-nine thousand dollars, a lot of that is grant dollars, and we distributed about fifteen hundred boxes of food to families and individuals in need, and we're going to continue to work to do that. Frank was a big part in, in one of those grants, and, you know, one of the boxes that we had at the beginning of the pandemic was, we need to try to help people, and, and that was, they did a great job, and I wanted to give that, that department some kudos, and again, if, if you need help, anybody that out there, if you need help, call us, go online. We have that information on our COVID-nineteen hub on our website. Whatever you need assistance with, we'll do our best to try to help you. Kudos to Jennifer, and the mayor informed us last week that we received another NOPEC grant. That grant is about thirty-three thousand dollars, little less than the years passed, but we will be able to utilize that money for various energy improvements. We do not have a project earmarked yet, although we're looking at some options, and we'll be sharing that in the coming meetings. I did want to mention, and we, we, Council and I spoke about it earlier, in regards to the vaccinations, and I touched on individuals who need assistance, or if you're just looking for information regarding the COVID-nineteen, please visit our website. We are updating information as it becomes available regarding the vaccinations. Once it becomes available through State of Ohio, and more importantly, Cuyahoga County, that will be on our website and on that page, so please visit that. More importantly, if you are an individual who are, if you wish to get vaccinated and are looking for some immediate information, excuse me, I'd recommend contacting your primary caregiver, and they'll also be able to help you through the process. Couple other quick things, a shout-out to our Water Department and Frank. Frank puts together some very detailed information for us as far as billing, as far as water loss, and it's a good way that we can track if we have leaks in our system. And the last data that Frank provided, we showed that eighty-nine percent of the water that was out there that we were getting charged for was indeed being billed. What this percentage means is that we have really tightened up our system. You know, there's minimum leaks. We are doing, we do sound our system annually, but on top of that, Johnny Sokolowski and his staff, and Sean Francis and Clint Beller have really, really focused on buttoning that up, and when, I can tell you, it has been over twenty years, probably longer. I haven't gone that far back. We have not seen these numbers in decades, and that, that's a testament to that staff and that department, so kudos to them, and Frank for, for tracking that data. Appreciate it. It's obviously helpful. And lastly, I want to give a, another shout-out, and also, job well done to our, our Police Department, primarily Chief Stumpel. Chief has been working on the first steps through the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board. Our goal is to become certified, and we met that first step, and they actually put out a press release awarding Bedford for meeting the certification for their standards, so definitely kudos to Chief. Obviously, there's a lot more work to be done, and we review those things annually, but it is definitely a, a big accomplishment for, for our department and our city, definitely something to be proud of, so just wanted to acknowledge all of them. End of report.
Thank you. Our Law Director, John Montello, couldn't be with us tonight, but I do have him stand by with a telephone in case any legal issues come up, so he is, he is here in spirit. And we have our Finance Director, Frank Ambosi.
Four items that are quick tonight. You were talking about grants, Mike, in regards today, we got the four-broke grant, we received that from the county, it was over ninety-nine thousand dollars today that we received. Just let everybody know, the tax department right now, the due date is April fifteenth, so they have not extended that date as of today. So we'll stay tuned, but right now, it's not anticipated. That date's gonna change. It may give or take another day, but we'll, we'll honor that, of course, as usual. Last year, everything worked well in regards to having the department closed in regards to dealing with COVID-nineteen. It looks like in two thousand and twenty-one, for the filing of twenty, we're gonna be doing the same thing. It doesn't look like we're gonna have the face-to-face again. I don't think we're gonna be done by April fifteenth with all this, without the vaccinations going out quicker. So in that regards, be prepared to do the same filing last year, online, faxing, emailing, the box that's located in the front of the Tax Department. Keep in mind, we don't touch that paperwork for, until the next day. It takes twenty-four hours. We let that set aside. One other item of interest, as you talk about committees and boards, we do need some interest in the Board of Tax Appeals. We hardly meet, however, we do need residents of Bedford who are interested in taxes, finance, whatever, would be a nice little board to join in this year, where we're gonna have some interesting items coming up with COVID-nineteen. I will have some information out there on the website. Stay tuned for that, because that will be very important, and already prepared all that and started looking that over to get ready to put that online. At this point in time, that's all I have this evening, so if anybody's interested in Board of Tax Appeals, you could contact Tracy Simmons there or myself in regards to that. End of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Mrs. Spinks?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. Mike, I was real excited to see that had several trees removed on Natalie. We, we had five removed, really bad, dead trees, but I was really worried about the last storm we had, so I was glad, and finally, that tree that's on the corner of Grand and Kenyon finally came down. I'm glad no cars were damaged or anything, because it was pretty dead. Are there gonna be any more? I know there's a couple on Willard. I did have a resident that was driving down Grand and saw that the truck was down there, and also, wanna give a big kudos to those guys. They did an excellent job of cleaning up after that, and it was pretty amazing to watch those guys do that. It's just such a long process, but make sure that they know that the residents are real happy at the job that they did, and do they come back and remove the stumps? That's what I thought. I didn't want to tell them yet it not be that.
They'll be back out to remove the stumps. There's a separate piece of equipment. I don't know when that will be, but it's on our list. We have, obviously, that list is, you know, some sample of others that have come down, but they will, we will have to do that.
Yeah. Any updates on all the limbs and stuff that are on Southwick? Remember the house I sent you on the corner of Southwick and Grand, any, I know it's a residence, but they are on the, on the tree lawn? They did finally push them off the sidewalk, if you had anything else on that?
They have not been able to get the chipper back out yet since that last storm, just with staffing, and we had retire, retirement, so it stretched our staffing out further. I'm not sure when that will be, but I'll try to check into it again for you.
Okay, because I didn't know if I needed to advise the residents of maybe taking the limbs back, pulling them off of the tree lawn? Because I need more and more snow that we get. It's not gonna, and it, it looks pretty bad. I mean, we've got a lot of people that walk their dogs. It does look bad.
I'll check that this week and let you know.
I sent you pictures of it. I sent you a picture of it. I just got a couple complaints on it. And not to sound like a broken record, but the speeders, it's crazy. I know I discussed with you a couple weeks ago about gambling, test driving down here. We had two today, and I mean, they floored it, and you could hear them. It's, yeah, it's scary, especially with the tree, with the tree trimmer out, too. That's a big piece of equipment right there. So it's got bad, and I've got several complaints, again, on Willard. That seems to be the, the drag strips around town, so. I did see our guys out. I did see our police officers. I know they're out there kicking in. I, I see it on our reports and everything. Out delivering meals on wheels today. I saw our guys out, so I know they're out there. I know they're out there. Any information on when we're gonna get those flashing signs or whatever at the stop signs, Mike? I know you had checked into it.
Yeah, we're still waiting on those to be shipped. They were supposed to be here before Christmas. I know Deputy Chief Suts was following up around, right around the holidays. I'll find out. As soon as we get them, they're gonna be up.
Okay, good. Yeah, no, the mail was still behind. I, I got two Christmas cards today that were actually mailed on the fifth of December. I got two cards today. Um, yeah, so it's, it's still bad, so I appreciate that. I have something. Everybody pretty much well knows that I am the Vice President and the Representative for Council for the Bedford Historical Society, which is an honor to be on it. I'm coming to you tonight to ask you, we have a memorial brick program. If you've ever been on the square and you've been walking around and you see people's names and little things on the bricks around there, well, that program was started several, several years ago by Betsy Lee's father, and so you can, anybody can purchase a brick. So it's sixty dollars, and that's including tax, and to go on the square, and you can make your check payable to the Memorial Brick Program, and it's Bedford Historical Society at P.O. Box four-six-two-eight-two, Bedford, Ohio, four-four-one-four-six, or you can order a brick online, Also, you can contact me. I have several of the forums and stuff. I just purchased two bricks myself, one for my little buddy that passed away, Ryder Bouger, and for me and Bob's, our twelfth anniversary will be this summer, so I, we got married on the square, so there's several different things. Don, I didn't know I was gonna see if you wanted to do, because they're, they try to wait and get like three or four bricks, because they actually have to go get the brick, then take it, get it grave, then bring it back to the Service Department, so they try to do several. I didn't know if maybe you wanted to purchase one for your mom, in memory of your mom?
Yeah, I probably will. I've already got some by Elmer Flick, but yes, I've been looking at that.
Okay, well, I'll contact you, because we're trying to get these sent off for next week, so anybody else on council or anybody out there that's interested, I can give you a forum, or like you said, you can do, you can go online and, and do that, but it's a great thing, and it's just, it's a very heartwarming thing to have up there. And it does help with COVID, or not being able to have a lot of fundraiser, or not able to have any. Last year, we are working on trying to come up with some real, some stuff that will be COVID-friendly for the Historical Society, so with this sixty dollars for this brick, you know, you have, you see it when you go to the square and everything, and it'd be fun for family and stuff. It will help out the Historical Society, so if you're interested, you can contact me, or you can contact the Historical Society for that. And speaking of COVID, I don't know if people watched it earlier today. There was a beautiful tribute on TV, the Lincoln Memorial, where they had the lights in the skies. It was just so heartfelt. I have my front yard lit. I have my candles in my front door, in my front window, and this is an honor for the memory of all the people that we lost from COVID. I personally, twenty-seven people. That's a huge number to know personally that have either passed or been affected. I have a dear friend that's struggling right now, and she's been battling with it for quite a while. So this is for us to remember them. This is for us to do our part to be, to, for each other, to take care of each other, to be kind. Social distance. Wear your mask. This is not a hoax. It is a real thing. The doctors are not padding numbers. This is a real deal, so please just, just think of other people when you're going out. It doesn't take long to wear that mask. It's, I have asthma. It's not fun, but I do it to save other people. I do my part, so please do yours. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus?
Thank you. Well, first, the purchase of body and dash cams, which we'll be getting into here shortly, is a significant upgrade to our Police Department in keeping with the demands of the times, and I'm all for it. Now, I have to say that Councilmember Heather Rhodes will be sorely missed. She brought a lot of energy and spirit and helpful knowledge in areas of her expertise. She has made great contributions to the Bedford Garden Club and helped make the Bedford Downtown Alliance a reality, which she credits the beloved Joyce Donch as her inspiration, also to run for council, and most important, she's a good mom. On a personal note, I don't know who else could have compelled me to spend a number of Saturday mornings picking up trash and cigarette butts and sweeping the sidewalks of the downtown. I plan on continuing trash pickups along the streets of my ward. I know others will join me. I've seen you out there. I always think the best way to deal with all the trash is to simply pick it up. As you all know, we're meeting today on Tuesday because of the National Holiday in honor of Martin Luther King. This year is kind of special, I think. Using my, the technology of my computer, but unfortunately, it it, it doesn't want to cooperate with me, so I'm gonna have to read my sketchy notes. Okay, here we go. Won't take long. We're meeting today because of the National Holiday in honor of Martin Luther King. And I think this is kind of a, kind of an interesting one and special, because I think that we'll all have to agree that in recent times, it has been shown to us that racism is not a thing of the past. It's like a wound still festering and like a, a bone that needed to be re-broken so they could finally heal correctly. This is the hope and the dream. Coupled with this is the revealing of much else also, largely the erosion of our personal freedoms for the intended sake of society's safety. In all the days, in all my days in council, we've spent a large amount of our efforts working to restrict others' behavior we may disapprove of as a means to steer the community for what we subjectively think is for the best. But not for the sake of freedoms or property rights, but more often for the sake of perceived real estate values and associated revenues to the city, abating insistent complaints from residents and punitive reactions. Those of us who are here are only human, and we're doing the best that we know how. We we repealed one ordinance to allow for the simple joy of having a backyard campfire. And I think that's great. And more recently, we, we easing restrictions against vegetable gardens at a time when two-point-three million Ohioans are seeking food assistance. That's almost twenty percent of the entire population of the state. So special thanks to the city for all the efforts to try to provide food and the obtaining of additional grants to, to, to supply food to the residents in need. I just think that's wonderful, and I want to thank you, Mike, and all the staff. Other ordinances have been repealed, we've repealed, have been imposed by higher courts. And I think we have to acknowledge that our system of government is meant to ensure that justice prevails. The responsibility is not only this council's to strike that delicate balance between preserving our God-given rights and constitutional freedoms. preserving our God-given rights and constitutional freedoms and satisfying the wants and desires of each individual resident oftentimes aiming, aiming for restrictions on the actions of others. Each and every citizen may also embrace the normal ideal of freedom and acceptance and at least tolerate our inherent differences. Who can truly know the conditions and life's experiences which have led us all to believe as we do? And all I could say is we're all in this together. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Fleury.
Uh, let's see here. Mike, I just got a couple of little things. I, I did talk to you about this, uh, program for the seniors to have their taxes done. Have we come up with anything on that?
There are, we did identify right now A A R P, those, that's the organization we typically worked with. Typically worked with Bedford Heights with them as well. They're not come, they're not meeting one-on-one. They're offering like virtual assistance. Um, but as far as one-on-one, we have not identified, um, any that are very close to Bedford, meaning local. There are some that were included in a mini senior newsletter, um, that was included in the packets and that will have posted. Um, but there's none that are very close. We're still looking to identify some. And when we do, we'll share that public, we'll share that with the public.
Okay. Um, yeah, last year they ended up going to Bedford Heights and then now they're closed for their rec center. So I figured that wasn't going to get done that way either. Also, Union Street, I haven't heard anything. What's going on? Do you hear anything for the upcoming spring? Are we finally getting this done?
Well, it's supposed to get done this year. It's a county project and we're waiting to hear from the county. Obviously they're going to go out to bid for that. So we will be reaching out to them in the near future and find that out. My guess is they'll start the bidding process late spring. It'll be a summertime project. Uh, but when we hear more, we'll share it with council.
Okay. Uh, end of report. Thank you. Mrs. Muzik.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I just want to say that thank you to Wally and Sandy, part of my, um, question, that question's part of my evening. You guys have already talked about it, but, um, this is our second meeting of the year and I feel that a lot of people are kind of remiss because we can't be with them in our council chambers, but we'd like to accommodate them. But if you do want to, uh, share your time with us, we are on Zoom and I'm sure that if you look at our website, they'll tell you how to, um, join us in our Zoom meetings. Uh, as you already know, the big topic is where to get your shots for the COVID nineteen virus. Uh, there's been a lot of places publicized by the Board of Health in different cities. Our local area, as I mentioned in our work session, is my ward four areas in the drug mart vicinity and also the Walgreens facility. We do have a website. I can be, I can give it to you if I, if you want to call me or if you just go down to drug mart, they'll give you a little slip like I have myself. Uh, also last meeting was the first meeting of the year and we were caught by surprise with the departure of our councilwoman, Heather Rhodes. Um, she, uh, strong lady. She, um, had to do what she had to do for her health and we as a council wish her our best. Um, we live in a world, uh, right now that unfortunately, uh, times are, um, are rough and however you want to look at tomorrow and the best, the day after. You just take it as it comes and, um, as a council, all I can really say and truly we try to do our best for this city and hopefully the city will understand that we're doing our best in these circumstances. I have three good words for everybody. Be safe, be positive and be thankful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
All right. Well, Sandy stole some of my thunder because I was going to start off with the National Day of Remembrance, which is what's today is, uh, for the four hundred thousand plus that have passed away from the COVID virus this, uh, since it all started. And I do have my lights on also. Uh, it was asked that everybody turn their lights on and candles and all kinds of stuff for today and tonight. So Washington DC lit up and all across the country, church bells were supposed to go off at five thirty PM. Uh, this, this evening. So it's a day that, uh, we're not going to forget for a while because of so many people that have passed away. And now they're assuming that we'll probably hit the five hundred thousand by mid-February at the rate we're going. So this is not something to take lightly. Uh, I've known dozens of people already who have passed away from it. Uh, I've known even more that have been affected by it and some still have lingering it, uh, effects from it, uh, months afterwards. So this is not something to just cough off as a flu or something of that nature because it, it is very serious. So hopefully we can get this under control in the next couple of months with the vaccines, but it seems like it may be mutating as fast as the vaccines are getting distributed. So let's hope it doesn't mutate out of the vaccine and we have to start all over with that again. But today is the National Day of Remembrance. So if you, even if it's just a few hours tonight, turn on your porch lights and, and in remembrance for those that we have lost. Uh, I want to thank Mike for the G I S system. Uh, it's something that I've been pushing for since I got on council over twenty years ago. Uh, I worked partially on the G I S from the county, twenty some odd years ago when I worked there. So I saw the benefits back then. I've been to many seminars on the G I S over the years and what it can do for, in a way of savings of time and effort and money, especially in this day and age, becomes very important. So the city's moving forward with it and that is great to hear. Uh, the other thing is I want to give my condolences to the Grisepo family, Larry, who was the owner of La Garage Jewelers passed away on the thirteenth of January. Uh, his family, he, well, he's been through a lot with his family over the years too. And now he's finally at peace also. So my condolences go out to the family for that. Uh, Vic, Union Street. The county executive through the, uh, Public Works Department, a couple of weeks ago begged this big announcement. How they are going to concentrate on the low income communities this year for their resurfacing programs. They're going to be doing all the communities that don't have the funds to be able to do certain county roads. On that list was Union Street. So, uh, let's hope it does get done. But, uh, twice they mentioned it as being Bedford Heights, by the way, not Bedford, but, uh, the last call that they had on it, they did say Union Street in Bedford. So uh, it is on their list. Uh, they're going to be doing a lot of the primarily east side streets this year. So let's hope it moves forward on that. Uh, I also want to bring up the fact that we're almost halfway through climatologically through winter. Saturday is the midpoint climatologically of winter. So we've made it halfway. Unfortunately, the second half, especially in the beginning of it's usually our coldest and snowiest. So be careful out there. We're supposed to get snow again tonight too. So and one last thing, uh, there were, Red Cross is holding a blood drive at Walton Hills Village Hall tomorrow. Uh, all those that are eligible should try to sneak over there and give some blood. They were in a critical blood emergency. If you're there around five o'clock, you'll see me because I'm already signed up for it. So it's a much needed thing, especially now with all the problems that we have. Uh, so let's get out there and help out a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, one, one, uh, note is just to give a shout out to our Cleveland Browns and a good effort they did. We came up a little short, but, uh, they gave us the best season we've had in a long time to cheer. So, uh, good luck to them and they're looking for bigger and better things next year. So with that, let's move on to our one new business item, ordinance number ninety-eight forty-two dash twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for the purchase and the implementation of dash cameras and body cameras for the police department and declaring an emergency. And this we wish to put on first reading. There's still a little tweaking that needs to go into it. Like has been said, it's a good thing. And, and I think the cameras are going to show just what a great bunch of people we have in our police department and, and, uh, going to show the tough job that they go through day in and day out. But it's, it's a good thing. It's needed in this day and age and, uh, um, we're going to support it, but we need to do a first reading just because of some of the tweaking in the language, not the idea of it, but the language in the ordinance. So can I have a motion for, uh, first reading by Muzak, second by Saunders? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. And that brings us to hearing of citizens. Um, if you have a comment, send a email to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Citymanager@oh.gov. Mike, we have anything?
Uh, no, I checked it throughout the day today. Um, and I just refreshed it a few times and there have not been any, no, any questions.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, we will entertain a motion for adjournment. And by Fleury, second by Spinks, clerk, call a roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. And thank you all for listening and, uh, see you in a couple of weeks and Ward five, uh, we're looking for some good people to put in a letter for, uh, the position. Thank you. Good night.